Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to study session two of our course, Logic, Philosophy and Human Existence. We are looking at the nature of arguments in this study session two. Now you discover that in our daily life, we use the word argument to mean different things. An argument could be understood as a quora. It could be considered as a dispute and what a few, as a fight and what a few, but in logic, that is not what argument is. Argument is something that is completely different when it comes to logic. You cannot consider an argument in logic as a quora, it is not a quora. It is not a dispute, it is not a disagreement or even a controversy. In logic, when it comes to argument, we are talking about a system of thinking that builds to a conclusion. A system of thinking where statements are connected in such a way that they are so related that they lead you to a particular conclusion. That is what we mean by an argument. So when we talk about an argument in logic, we are referring to the a thinking process or pattern which arrives at a conclusion with support of evidence or a premise. A thinking process or pattern which arrives at a conclusion with support of evidence or what we call a premise. So when it comes to logic, an argument is made up of two main parts. The claim or belief or position which a person intends to put forward or accept us on the one hand, and then the justification or reasons or grounds which one intends to use in supporting the claim or belief. So we can call the first part, which is known as the first part is known as the conclusion of the argument, while the second part is known as the premise, or as it may be premises of the argument. So an argument is a conclusion standing in relation to its supporting evidence. So whenever we talk about an argument in logic, we are referring to a thinking process or pattern which arrives at a conclusion with the support of evidence or a premise. And there are different components of an argument. There are different components of an argument. Now, what are the different components of an argument? The different components of an argument are the statement, the proposition, inference, premise, conclusion, as the case may be. So we are going to look at each of these components. Now, what is a statement in logic in relation to argument? A statement is a declarative sentence or part of a sentence which is either true or false, but not both. A statement is a declarative sentence or part of a sentence which is either true or false, but not both. It should be noted that a statement is taken from a sentence in that a sentence is only one formulation of a statement, whereas there may be many other formulations expressing the same statement. A statement can either be simple or compound. A statement can either be simple or compound. A simple statement has only one statement. For example, John is a tall boy. Fatima is a beautiful girl. A compound statement consists of two or more simple statements connected by one or more connectives. What are the connectives? And, or, no. Connectives are words that join statements. Words that join statements. So when two different simple statements are joined by a connective, that particular statement that comes out of this combination becomes a compound statement. So a sent statement is a declarative sentence or part of a sentence which is either true or false, but not both. In logic, we deal with a declarative sentence. You can make a sentence, like how are you? That is, that's a sentence. How are you? It's a sentence. Well, you know that that is interrogative. It is more like a question that you are asking. The answer cannot be true or false. Stop there. It can also be a sentence, but the answer cannot be true or false. But a statement like John is a tall boy. The answer can either be true or false. If you look at John and you discover that John is tall, then you can say it is true. But if John is not tall, you can say it is false, and that is why it is a declarative sentence. So what we are dealing with in logic, we are dealing with a statement which is considered as a declarative sentence or part of a sentence which is either true or false, but not both. The next component of an argument is what we call proposition. What we call a proposition is any formal statement which is either true or false, but not a matter of opinion. In logic, a proposition is any statement which is true or false, but not a matter of opinion. So a statement which can be appraised as either true or false is what we consider, is considered as a proposition in logic. Take note, take note. The next component of an argument is what we call an inference. An inference is a process of reasoning in which a new belief is formed on the basis of evidence or proof supposedly provided by other beliefs. In other words, an inference is refers to a statement we make about a noun using the noun as its foundation. You use the noun as the foundation of an unknown statement you are trying to make. That is an inference. So it's a thinking process by which one proposition is arrived at and affirmed on the basis of one or more other proposition accepted as a certain point of the process. Number four, premise. When we refer to the premise of an argument, the premise of an argument refers to that particular statement or proposition which is intended to provide support or evidence for such an argument. If you claim that somebody is good, certainly I want to provide reasons why the person is good. The reasons you are providing to buttress the position that the person is good refer to what we call the premises. The reasons you are providing to defend the position that the person is good are referred to as the premises. So that's what we refer to as premises in logic. So the premise of an argument refers to that particular position that is intended to provide support or evidence for that particular argument. Then we have what we call the conclusion. The conclusion of an argument is that statement or proposition for which the premises are intended to provide support. Whatever support you are providing is aimed at buttressing the conclusion. So that particular statement which is intended to provide support for is referred to as the conclusion of an argument. So those are the different components of an argument that we need to be introduced to. Now, there are types of arguments. Arguments in logic are classified into two distinct types based on certain relations that are claimed to hold or not hold between the premises and the conclusion. So the major types of argument in logic are deductive and inductive argument, deductive and inductive arguments. What is a deductive argument? Generally speaking, the general understanding of a deductive argument is that it's an argument that moves from a general instance to a particular conclusion. You start the argument from a general perspective and then the conclusion is a particular one. That is the general understanding of what a deductive argument is. Beyond that, a deductive argument is an argument whose relationship between the premise and the conclusion is that of necessity. That is very important in every definition of deductive argument. In deductive argument, the relationship between the premise and the premises and the conclusion is that of necessity. What we mean by saying that it is that of necessity is that it is not possible for the premises to be true and the conclusion false because the conclusion must necessarily follow from what we have in the premises. For instance, we have this type of argument, all youths are students. Jumeirah is a youth. Therefore, Jumeirah is a student. The first two statements are the premises, while the last one is the conclusion. We discover that this is an example of a deductive argument that flows from a general instance to a particular conclusion. All youths are students. That is general. Now, from the class of youths that are students, we are picking one person, Jumeirah, that is a youth. And we are saying that because Jumeirah belongs to the class of youths whom we have considered as being students. It means that Jumeirah is also a student. That is what we're going to say about a deductive argument. But then, whatever conclusion we draw from the sequence of arguments we just use as an example, you discover that the conclusion had to flow from what was contained in the premises. So that's why we are saying that in every deductive argument, the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of necessity because the conclusion must necessarily flow from the premises. Now, if you look at that sequence of argument, I'm going to discover a number of things there. The first statement, that general statement, all youths are students, is considered as a major premise. Why is it a major premise? Because it is a premise that carries or makes a general statement. All youths, that's a universal statement. Then the second one that has picked out Jumeirah that says Jumeirah is a youth, for picking out Jumeirah, the statement is specific, and because it is specific, we call it a minor premise. Then, Jumeirah is a student is now the conclusion. Before we move to the second type of argument, which is considered as inductive argument, it is important for us to look at syllogism closely. Remember, we had said in study session one that syllogism was Al-aziz Tutsu's major contribution to logic. So now we want to look at what this syllogism is more closely. So what is a syllogism? When we talk about this syllogism, this syllogism is a form of deductive argument that has three propositions, three propositions, in which the first two are premises, while the third is a conclusion. At this level, I expect you to understand what we mean whenever we use the word or the term premise. Remember, we said that the premise is whatever reason or evidence you are providing to support whatever conclusion you have. I also expect you to know what a proposition is. Whenever you see a proposition, what you come to your mind is a formal statement. So when we talk about this syllogism, we are saying that this syllogism is a type of deductive argument that has three formal statements of proposition. Now, out of these three formal statements of proposition, we are saying that the first two are considered as the premises because they are the ones that are providing support to the conclusion we want to draw, and then the third one is considered as the conclusion. So from this understanding of a syllogism, if we have an argument like this, all students are hardworking. John is a student, therefore John is hardworking. This is an example, a perfect example of a syllogism. And in this syllogism, we are able to identify different parts in it. The first line or the first sentence, all students are hardworking, is considered as a major premise. The second one, John is a student, is considered as a minor premise. Remember what we said about major and minor premises. We say major premise makes a general statement, and that's why we have all students are hardworking. That is general. Minor premise makes a specific statement. That's why we picked out John is a student, line two. Then, the final one is the conclusion. So that is an example of what a syllogism. Now, there are different terms we can derive from a syllogism. In a syllogism, there are different terms. We have terms like the major term. We have what we call the minor term. And then we also, we have the middle term. The major term, the minor term, and the middle term. What is a major term of a syllogism? The major term of a syllogism is the predicate of the conclusion. The predicate of the conclusion. That is the major term of an argument. Remember, we have done something like how to break a sentence into two, into the subject and the predicate. If you remember what you did in your secondary school days, it is easier for you to understand what we are referring to here. So what we are saying here is in any set of argument that you consider as a syllogism, like the example that we have, what we call the major term in that type of syllogism is the predicate of the conclusion. So to identify the major term from the example we use, the example of a syllogism, that is, all students are hardworking, John is a student, therefore John is hardworking. If we want to identify the major term of that particular syllogism, we are saying that the major term is the predicate of the conclusion. So what we'll do is we'll go to the conclusion of the argument, and the conclusion of the argument is therefore John is hardworking. That is the conclusion of the argument. Now, you need to note that in every set of arguments you have, there are certain words that help you to know that this is the conclusion. For instance, the common one is therefore. The word therefore there is a pointer to the fact that that particular statement is a conclusion in that particular argument. So when we are looking at the major term of a particular syllogism, we'll go to the conclusion. Our attention will not be on therefore. What we'll be looking at is the statement John is hardworking, which is the conclusion. Now, if we break that conclusion into the subject and predicate, we discover that John is the subject and his hardworking is the predicate. However, we are not saying that the, we are not, we are not just looking for the predicate. We are looking for the term, major predicate term in the conclusion. So the major term there, which is the, which is in the, which is the predicate of that particular conclusion is hardworking. So if we are asked, what is the major term of this syllogism that we have used as our example, what we'll do is we'll go to the conclusion, since we said the major term of an argument is the predicate of the conclusion, we'll go to the conclusion which is therefore John is hardworking. Then we look out for the predicate. What is the major term in the predicate? And we know that the predicate there is, is hardworking. And what is the major term in that predicate? The major term in that predicate is hardworking. Therefore, hardworking becomes our major term. Now we'll move to the minor term. Now, the minor term of a syllogism is the subject of the conclusion. The subject of the conclusion. So we will go again to the conclusion of the argument, which is therefore John is hardworking. And we ask ourselves, what is the subject of that particular uh, uh, conclusion? The subject is John. So John becomes the minor term of the argument because we say a minor term, the minor term of an argument is the subject of the conclusion, and the conclusion is therefore John is hardworking. So the, the, the subject of the conclusion is John, and John becomes the minor term of the argument. Then the next one is the middle term. What is the middle term of a syllogism? The middle term of the syllogism is that term that appears on both the first and second premises, but does not appear in the conclusion. The middle term appear on both the first and second premises, but does not appear in the conclusion. Now we'll go back to our argument, all students are hardworking. John is a student, therefore John is hardworking. We'll ask ourselves the question, what is that term that appears on the first premise and the second premise, but does not appear on the conclusion? Look at hardworking. Hardworking is in the conclusion. Look at John. John is in the conclusion. So the only term that does not appear in the conclusion, but appears on both the first and second premise, is students. So student becomes the middle term of our syllogism. Those are the things I'm trying to make us understand. Remember, we said we have major term, minor term, and middle term. The major term of the syllogism is the predicate of the conclusion. The minor term is the subject of the conclusion, and then the middle term is that particular term that appears on both premises, but does not appear in the conclusion. Now, there are three types of syllogism. We have categorical syllogism, hypothetical syllogism, or alternative syllogism. Our concern will be more on categorical syllogism. What is a categorical syllogism? A categorical syllogism states categorically the inclusion or exclusion of a group into another group, either partially or completely. The inclusion or exclusion of a group into another of a group from another group, either partially or completely. The inclusion or exclusion of a group from another group, either partially or completely. That is what we refer to as a categorical syllogism. Now, there are four types of categorical syllogism. Number one, universal affirmative, universal or universal affirmative, affirmative negative or universal negative, affirmative particular or particular affirmative, then the affirmative and the negative particular or particular negative. Those are the four types of categorical syllogism. Now, what do, what does each of these four types mean? The first one is the affirmative universal or the universal affirmative. This is a categorical syllogism which assigns the complete inclusion of a group in another group. For example, all youths are students. This reveals that the group of youths is a student of the group of students. So we are, this is universal in the standard. It refers to all youths being also in the category of what? Students. And you can see the pictorial illustration of that universal affirmative syllogism, categorical syllogism. The next one is universal negative. In the universal negative, the universal negative, it asserts a complete denial of a group from being included in another group. In the universal negative, one group is completely excluded from another group. For instance, we have no female student is lazy. We have two groups here, the group of female students and then the group of lazy ones. So we are saying that no female student is lazy. This means you are excluding everybody who is a female student from the group of people we consider as lazy. And so because it is negative, you see the word no there being used. So in negative, universal, universal negative, we see a complete denial of a group from being included in another group. For example, no female student is lazy. The next one is affirmative particular or universal affirmative. This is a categorical syllogism which assigns a partial inclusion of a group into another group. Here, it is not complete inclusion, it is partial inclusion. It means some are included, while others are excluded. So for instance, I have some male students are kind. It means in the group of male students, some are kind and other ones are not kind. That is what it means. So part of the male students belong to a group of kind people, while the other one, while the other group does not. So that is what we mean by particular affirmative, so partial inclusion. Then the last one is particular negative or negative particular. This is a categorical syllogism that denies the partial inclusion of a group into another group. In other words, some parts of a group are not included in another group. For example, some female students are not workers, which means some may be workers, but there are others that are not workers. So this is a case of partial inclusion. Remember, we talked about the, the major types of syllogism. We have looked at the categorical one, which is maybe one of those four types. We have the second one, which is hypothetical syllogism. A hypothetical syllogism also called conditional syllogism. It states the conditional situation of one being a part of a group. It says that if something occurs, then some other things will be the case. In summary, if A is true, then B is also true. If A, then B. So it appears through a major premise, a minor premise, and then a conclusion. If X happens, then Y is the case. If X has happened, Y is the case. Any students who cheat in an examination is expelled. Wilson cheated during the first semester examination. Wilson was expelled. That's an example of a hypothetical syllogism. Then the next one is alternative syllogism or disjunctive syllogism. This is a syllogism which gives alternative to the occurrence of an event. Alternatively, either A is true or B is what true. Because if A is true, then B is false, and if B is true, A is what false. A and B cannot both be true. Wilson's delay could be attributed, example, Wilson's delay could be attributed to either of the two things, such that if it is not one, then it is, it has to be the other. Wilson's failure to come to school is either due to illness or development of fault in his car. The car did not develop any faults. It must have fallen here. So either you vote for me, another example, either you vote for me or you vote for this or that. This is, these are examples of alternative syllogism. Now, another thing we need to look at before we look at the second type of argument is what we call categorical propositions. A categorical proposition is an affirmation or denial of the relation of inclusion or exclusion between one class then and another, either in whole or in part. This is more like what we have looked at in categorical syllogism. So proposition, remember, we say a proposition is a formal statement. So any statement you make that is formal is considered as a proposition in logic. So for example, we have statements like, all lawyers are learned people, no females are males, some Africans are white, some blacks are not honest. They are all examples of categorical propositions. So from the examples, there are four types of categorical propositions. So from the examples, there are four types of categorical propositions that we have already met. Universal affirmative, universal negative, particular affirmative, particular negative. You know, this looks more like, eh, different types of syllogisms we have already, categorical syllogisms we have already considered. So the same meaning applies to them. You see, the four, the four letters that are used to represent the four types of categorical, uh, propositions, A, E, I, O. A for universal affirmative, E for universal negative, I for particular affirmative, and O for particular negative. Now, categorical propositions are said to be either affirmative or negative in quantity and universal or particular in quantity. Quality has to do with whether it is affirmative or negative. Then, quantity has to do with whether it is universal or particular. Universal, general, or particular, selective. Affirmative, positive, negative, uh, negative, uh, nega-, uh, affirmative has to do with positivity, while negative has to do with negativity. So when we're talking about the quality of categorical propositions, we're referring to whether the propositions are affirmative or negative. But when we talk of the quantity of categorical propositions, we're referring to whether the propositions are universal or particular. So a categorical proposition is made up of four parts. The subject term, predicate term, copula, and quantifier. The subject term is the subject of the proposition. Every formal statement you make has a subject. So the subject term is what we consider as what? The subject term. The predicate term is the predicate of the proposition. The copula is the word or refers to words that we use to link the subject and the predicate. What are the words? Is. John is a Nigerian. All girls are beautiful. The words is and are that we have used in those two examples are given, are referred to as the copula. Now, the quantifier is that part that indicates a quantity or number in the proposition. Um, it is signified by all, no, and some. All, universal. No, universal. Some, particular. So we refer to those terms as quantifiers. Is and or are, we refer, is and are are referred to as copulas. They were the subject term and the predicate term. And the next type of argument, major type of argument, is the inductive argument. Like we said in the deductive argument, when you are looking at an inductive argument, the general understanding is an, it is an argument that proceeds from a particular instance to a general conclusion. An argument that proceeds from a particular instance to a general conclusion. From one example, from one instance, you can make a conclusion about the rest. You know somebody from Garapu that is good. Because that person, one person you met from Garapu that is good, is good, you generalize that everybody from Garapu is also good. That is inductive nature. But then, just as we said about deductive arguments, when we are defining an inductive argument, you cannot remain at that level. Beyond that, we want to say that in an inductive argument, the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of probability. Remember, we said the relationship between the premises and conclusion in a deductive argument is that of necessity. But in an inductive argument, the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of probability. The truth of the premises of an inductive argument is not sufficient to establish the truth of this conclusion. In other words, what we have in the premises may not be enough for us to conclude in an inductive argument. That is why we're saying the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of probability. And that leads us to the evaluation of arguments. When we are evaluating arguments, we are assessing or judging arguments. Now, in logic, both deductive and inductive arguments could be considered as either correct or incorrect. You can evaluate them as correct or incorrect. In the same vein, soundless or unsoundless could be used for both deductive and inductive arguments. You can evaluate deductive arguments as, and inductive arguments as sound or unsound. There's no problem. However, only deductive arguments are considered as either valid or invalid. Only deductive arguments can be considered as valid or invalid. Remember, we said in the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of necessity. And that is why we are saying that it is only deductive arguments that can be considered as valid or invalid. A deductive argument is correct if it is valid. That is, if its conclusion follows logically from its premises. It is incorrect if it is invalid, that is, if its conclusion does not follow logically from its premises. Look at examples of a valid deductive argument. "All adult Nigerian citizens are eligible to vote", "The incumbent president is an adult Nigerian citizen", "Therefore, the incumbent president is an eligible voter", example of an invalid deductive argument. "If I were a Nigerian, then I would be African", "I am not a Nigerian", "Therefore, I am not African". Inductive arguments, on the other hand, are either strong or weak. We said deductive arguments are valid or invalid. But when it comes to inductive arguments, they are either strong or weak. An inductive argument is correct when the premises, if true, justify the inductive claim. In that case, it is said to be strong. It is considered as incorrect inductive argument when the premises do not justify the inductive claim. In that case, it is considered to be weak. So we can have strong inductive argument and weak inductive argument. Why are we saying that? Because for each of them, you look at the instances provided and check whether they are sufficient enough to guarantee whatever conclusion you want to make. And the premise is enough to guarantee the conclusion you want to make. Depending on the sufficiency of the premises to guarantee the conclusion, then you can determine whether it is strong or weak. We have example, this is an example of a strong inductive argument. "Well, over two million horses have been observed", "Each one has been found to have a heart", "All horses have a heart", "That is a strong one", "Why is this strong?", because we have looked at over two million horses. That is a large number. So if you make a conclusion from that, this makes sense. But look at this weak one. "Twenty horses have been observed", "Each one has been found to have a heart", "All horses have a heart", so you observed only twenty horses, out of the many million horses that we have in this world. And out of those twenty, you are making a conclusion about the rest. Compare that with the first one we had, where we were able to examine two million. Over two million were observed. It is clear that the samples we have in the first one, the samples are more than enough compared to the ones in the second one. So that's why I'm saying the first one is strong and the second one is weak. So far, in this study session, we have learnt that an argument is a thinking process which arrives as a conclusion with the support of evidence or premise. We have also identified the different components of an argument, and we have said that there are two categories of arguments, namely deductive and inductive arguments. We say the deductive argument proceeds from a general instance to a particular conclusion, and the relationship between the premise and the conclusion is that of necessity. An inductive argument, on the other hand, often proceeds from a particular instance to a general conclusion, and the relationship between the premises and the conclusion is that of probability. Now, we said there are different components of an argument, as I've said already. We have the statement, proposition, premise, inference, and conclusion. And we are also saying that in evaluating arguments, only deductive arguments are considered as valid or invalid, while inductive arguments are evaluated as either strong or